I call the meeting to order of the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, October the 7th. If you would be so good as to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. To the flag of the state of New Mexico. And I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico.
I see that we welcome two members of the public here directly and the press, June Ogil. Thank you all for being here. If I could please ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Stone?
Here.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless? Commissioner Middlestaff?
Present.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to study the minutes?
I presume you're talking about both sets of minutes?
Correct.
Yes.
Does anyone have any changes or suggestions, corrections on the minutes? Hearing no sounds. I entertain a motion to approve the both sets of minutes, August 19th and September the 2nd of 2025.
I move to approve the minutes of the joint working meeting with the town of Silver City Town Council, August 19th, 2025, and the minutes from the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2025.
We have a motion, it's through a second.
Second.
Any further discussion or debate? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries on a voice vote unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is reports. And if I could send the floor over to the Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. We have no reports at this time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community input. I would point out, we do have a public hearing after community input, so if you wish to do specific discussions or correctional speech during the public hearing, then we can delay that until then. So anyone from the public who wishes to do general community input unrelated to the text amendment public hearing, you are welcome to approach the podium. Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, case number TA 25-01. A request for recommendation of various amendments to certain provisions of Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010 and updating the title to the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2025 to the Town Council. The applicant is the town of Silver City, represented by the Community Development Department. Although this is not going to result in a permit, it still is required to be a public hearing, therefore we will go through a standard protocol for public hearings. Has any commissioner had any... Well, ex parte communication. I would point out that since this is a legislative action, that is okay. Just following the steps.
Point of clarification.
Point of clarification.
What would be ex parte in this instance, talking to the general public about these proposals?
Absolutely.
Because it applies to everybody that lives within this town and actually in the extraterrestrial.
Correct. And the only reason I ask the question is it is part of the protocol for a public hearing, but since this is going to result in a resolution and not a permit...
I have talked to a number of people about their opinions at various times through the last year on this, so...
Excellent. Commissioner Stone?
No, I have not.
And Commissioner Moody?
I may have, but I think I haven't. Talked about some things, but not particularly on these.
And I have also listened to a lot of public input on this, and as I say, this is not going to result in a permit. It will merely result in a resolution, therefore the ex parte conditions do not disqualify anyone. I also observe that we have a quorum, therefore we may proceed. This is a quasi-judicial process. The presiding officer will have sole discretion in directing questions. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I do have to swear in anyone who wishes to testify from either the public or the town staff. If you would be so good as to relocate yourself to the podium, I will then swear you in. That would apply to the members of the public if you wish to participate.
What if you don't know?
No harm in being sworn in and then not saying anything.
You're on the computer right now, so can you say something quickly?
Testing 1, 2, 3.
Okay.
Okay. If you'd be so good as to raise your right hand and say after me, "I solemnly swear or affirm..."
I solemnly swear or affirm.
"...that the testimony I am about to give..."
That the testimony I am about to give.
"...before this commission in this hearing..."
Before this commission in this hearing.
"...shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth."
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. And I would ask staff to ensure that the log shows the records of the names of people who have been sworn in.
And if I didn't miss the beginning, is this about time for me to speak?
He's asking, is it time for him to speak?
Oh, not yet. No, no, no. No, there will be ample opportunity. The first question I've got of the staff, did we receive any emails or letters regarding tonight's meeting?
We did receive one phone call from a member of the public that I believe is in attendance.
Okay.
But there was no comments regarding the regulations that are up for hearing this evening.
Thank you. Next item then will be a staff report, and I believe all commissioners have a copy of the staff report. If you would care to read the report into the record?
Request TA 25-1, a request for recommendation of various amendments to certain provisions of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010 and updating the title of the Land Use Code to the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2025 to the Town Council. The current Land Use and Zoning Code was adopted in 2010. The code is created to be a living document which may at times be adjusted for a better fit to the town's goals and existing conditions. Staff has compiled a list of minor adjustments, changes, and updates which have arisen with the use of the new code. Together suggested changes on the encroachment process and changes with modest adjustments to the code. Section LU 5.4, Code Review and Update. The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan states, "Review and update at five-year intervals of the town zoning and development codes to ensure they're consistent with and facilitate the implementation of the land use goals." Section 6.3.2A of the Land Use Code states, "An amendment to the text of the Land Use Code may be proposed by the Town Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, or by the Community Development Director." Section 6.3.2B, Review Procedure of the Land Use and Zoning Code states, "The Planning Commission shall conduct at least one public hearing and make a recommendation to Town Council to approve, modify, or deny the proposed amendment. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to the Town Council about the request at hand, it shall at minimum make at least one of the following findings: One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan; Two, the proposed amendment shall not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan; Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake in the town's comprehensive plan; Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code; Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, lands committed to development, density or use, further studies that have been completed since the adoption of the Land Use Code; Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to the state and/or federal legislation; Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code. It is the opinion of the Community Development Department that the text amendment/zone change meets the following findings: One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan; Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan; Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the Land Use Code; Five, the proposed amendment responds to changed conditions such as changes in assumptions of capital investments, road locations, population trends, lands committed to development, density, use, further studies that have been completed since the adoption of the Land Use Code; and Seven, the proposed amendments provide additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code.
Thank you. Does that complete your case in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for town staff at this point?
No.
Hearing none. The next item would be any public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to come forward who has been sworn and comment on what we're doing this evening, or ask any questions of town staff? Please, sir. And if you would state your name and then make sure the red light is on on the push button there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Tom Shelley. I'm County Commissioner for District 5, for Grant County, and I appreciated getting a copy recently of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance or rules, but it's a lot to take in in a short time, and I did read, there was a very good sort of summary document up front describing the various changes in the sections, but I really don't have a comment at this time other than to ask a couple of questions. So first of all, sort of an administrative question, since most of our... Is there going to be a time period to submit written comments after tonight's hearing? And how would we submit those?
I would ask the Assistant Town Manager to answer that question.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. Yes, you can submit comments that will be recorded for the public hearing that will be conducted by the council on October 28th. So anytime between now and then, I can collect any comments that you would like to have the Town Council hear, and so then they can address them during that public hearing.
Okay.
Or if there's something that I can clarify for you as well.
Great. Thank you. And then the second question is just that. I did study the sections for extraterritorial jurisdiction areas, because I think that's where we overlap in jurisdiction and interest, although obviously the county includes the whole town as well, so we care about that, too. I think I understand the general changes for the zoning. If I understood it in a nutshell, it's to facilitate getting permits or approvals to folks who want to increase the density of dwellings on their property and so forth within the town, and I understand there's a great need for additional housing, and that's a good thing. I think I understand and support that. If you could, just, I just have this question, how, it seemed like there was a lot of rules back in the ETJ part of it that were struck out and replaced, and I just wanted to understand in layman's terms, how, if you could, a little bit more than what was written in the introductory letter, explain to the public and Grant County commissioners what those changes mean and how they facilitate or benefit the intent of these changes.
I can give one answer to that, and then I'll give the floor to any commissioner who wishes to add, and then also to the Community Development Department. In essence, what we looked at was whether inconsistencies in our code were the examples that just did not make any sense, even if not inconsistent. And so we focused on a number of issues that, for example, additional dwelling units used to be based on in the existing code, the square footage of what's on there right now, the primary residence, which seems a strange way to do it when it seems more logical to use the square footage of the parcel of land, less setbacks and things like that. So that was one example. There were also issues to do with road frontage and so on and so forth. So to me, those are some of the biggest changes, but there are other changes of importance, and I would ask if any commissioner wishes to add to that before I hand the floor back to the Community Development. One of the... Ah, thank you, Commissioner Middlestaff. Yes. Something I have questioned since I was on the Town Council many years ago was the membership of the Planning and Zoning Commission. One of the feedbacks that I've been getting for a long time is great, but how's the town represented in how you do business? As far as the Town Council goes, that is cast in concrete, its state statute, and also the town ordinance, but the state statute is dominant and councillors must be residents of the town. So I asked, why on earth do we have that restriction in planning and zoning? And here's the answer. Planning and zoning is two separate commissions folded into one, specifically NMSA 78, 3-19, 1, et cetera, and 3-21, et cetera. Nowhere in the zoning statute is there any reference to residency requirements for a commissioner. The actual statute for the Planning and Plating Commission, of which we are also, obviously, nowhere in the statute is there a reference. There was only one Attorney General opinion, and it related to, can one town have the Planning and Zone Commission do also planning and zoning for another town? And the answer was no. So by allowing one of our members of the commissioner to be from outside the town, we now have for the first time in a long time, some representation by council members on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think that is an incredible improvement. It should point out that we have lost a very good chair, we lost a very good commissioner, and we failed to be able to accept an application to join the commission purely because they lived literally one inch outside of the town. So I'm very proud of having pushed that and finally getting into the proposed code. I think that can only show an improvement in working with county residents. Any other comments from any commissioner? And if I could ask our Community Development and Assistant Town Manager to add to my comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Shelley. So in the section that pertains most directly to the ETJ, which is the subdivision section, we do have administrative subdivisions, and now we're adding a minor subdivision process and then major subdivisions. So previously, it was either major, or administrative, or major. So administrative is just one cut onto your property, and then anything more than one cut, creating more than two parcels, would be considered major. So on the administrative side, what we're adding is some flexibility for property owners, especially in areas that have been annexed within the town of Silver City, so a lot of those properties don't abut platted right-of-way, they have like access easements. So one of the requirements in the administrative subdivision process is that they have to have a minimum frontage requirement, and so it basically stops those people being able to subdivide their property since they're not located next to a piece of platted right-of-way. So we're removing that requirement and adding just the requirement of a legal access easement, so they don't have to be next to a platted road. There's around like Mountain View Road specifically, there's a lot of properties like along Sun Tanner, Fraser, Harris, that doesn't have platted right-of-way along that section, so this would help those people be able to conform to the regulations that we have at hand rather than us telling them that they can't subdivide or just divide their property into one cut. So then, in addition to that, we also are adding a minor subdivision process, so anything under nine, I believe, let me look, just one second. Yes. So that wouldn't make more than nine lots. It expedites the process, so previously it was all major subdivision, which major subdivision comes with a sketch plat, a preliminary plat, and then that preliminary plat has to go before planning and zoning and Town Council for approval, then they go and they get that final plat done, and then they have to go back to Town Council, or to Planning and Zoning and Town Council for approval. So the minor subdivision removes the secondary requirement of having to go again. So they would meet with the administrative staff at the town, talk with the utilities, streets, you know, any pertinent department, get all that information, and then basically be creating a final plat that would be reviewed by Planning and Zoning and then Town Council for adoption. And then we would still be maintaining the major subdivision process for lots more than 10. So creating more than 10 lots, you would still have to do the preliminary plat which would go before PMZ and Town Council, then that preliminary plat would be approved, then it would be, you would go back with any feedback, get the final plat, and then come back again for approval, and then it has to be constructed within a year. So it helps a little bit with the process, especially for smaller developers that are trying to develop their property if they, you know, are only wanting to put in, you know, under nine subdivision, you know, individually owned lots. It helps expedite the process rather than having to wait. Our requirement for public hearings is six weeks, so since there would be two public hearings, it basically puts it up to almost 12 weeks before they get a preliminary decision, and then they have to go back for the final plat and then go through that process again. So that helps with people, nine lots and under, and then the administrative side, it helps again with people that don't have direct access to right-of-way. Carlos, do you have anything else to add? We do have our consultant on the line who helped draft some of these. Carlos, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Jackie, I just wanted to be clear, I think you got it right, but just to be clear about the numbers sold here, if you're creating, you know, one additional lot, which would be the two total lots, that would be the administrative. If you're creating nine additional lots, it's going to be 10 totals, that would be the minor. And if you're creating more than nine lots, or, you know, 11 or more total, then you'd be doing the major subdivision. Just to be clear about what those numbers were. But besides that, yeah, I think it's just making the process a little bit easier to go through the subdivision process, and then also adding, clarifying a little bit more of what the review would be when there's large development that's not going through the subdivision process, and so clarifying how some of that would work through the zoning permit process, just to make sure that there's proper utilities, public safety, other kinds of setbacks and development standards are being met when there's larger developments that are, again, not going through the subdivision process.
Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Commissioner Shelley, also another thing that we are reducing is the minimum lot size. So currently, the minimum lot size for the majority of zones is 5,000 square feet. So even in the ETJ, that 5,000 square foot number is attached, so if somebody wanted to subdivide smaller than that, they wouldn't be allowed to do so in the ETJ. We want to reduce that lot size to 2,500, so it gives people a little more flexibility to utilize their property if they wanted to cut off, you know, like, I think we calculated something around 2,500 square feet was close to a round number of an acre, and I can't remember exactly what that number was off the top of my head, but it helps give a little more flexibility to people if they just wanted to parcel off a small section that they wanted to sell or to give to a family member, whatever that may be, so we're reducing that requirement as well.
And I would add a couple of other things. Thank you, Jackie. We've also removed the PUD, Plant Unit Development Process. It was nothing but a pain in the rear, and it also increased the costs, and our alternative is to consider mixed-use concepts rather than a PUD, and that, again, can make life a lot easier for people. One other thing which probably doesn't affect the ETJ, but I will mention it, we had an update to the cannabis ordinance a while back, and there were some opportunities for improvement, and one of the things we're doing is making sure that the cannabis facility will not be established in a mixed-use zone, and additionally, that there will be separation between cannabis facilities. Again, I think that's something that I've received a lot of comments on.
Thank you. Your comments and clarifications have already helped me understand what I was reading better, so I really appreciate you going through that with me. And I think I've captured it, but I'll have to go back and reread it until it really sinks in, so I may call you if I have additional questions after doing that. Let me ask one more question that I was wondering about, and that is, when we change these zoning rules as such, it seems like the older thinking on zoning was, if you have larger lots, I mean, this wasn't originally, because I know my mom's house was on many very small lots from the old days, but it seems like at some point there was a desire to make bigger lots with, say, nicer homes, so to speak, bigger homes, and it must have been probably driving toward increasing aesthetics and property value, perhaps. Do you see any, how this, how these changes might affect aesthetics and property value going forward?
My answer would be that we've had many discussions back and forth on moving from what we've had in the past to what is now a dimensional standard, and that's exactly one of the key questions, because if you look, we've increased the number of dwelling units on a parcel of land per acre, and that question arose, and the... And the thoughts that we had were that most, many of the larger lots are also protected by covenants. So what we were looking for was a balance between reducing the restrictions that the town has, which of course, yes, it could have an impact. However, the restrictive covenants are there to be used by the residents. So the balance of the town reducing its restrictions is counted by the ability of the residents to use those covenants, to say, "Well, not if it violates the covenants," or however you choose to do it. So the power goes back to the residents of the neighborhood to say, "Silver City, very nice that you say that, but I think we want to control it our way with our covenants." So just to give the best of both worlds.
Nice.
And I would ask if Community Development would like to add or comment on that.
Thank you Chairman, Commissioner Shelley. Also, I can see the concern that, you know, increasing density may attract, you know, less aesthetically pleasing housing, but with the town's comprehensive plan, it does highlight infill development, which does benefit the town and also benefits the county, because we are the ones that have a lot of the infrastructure in place, like the water lines, you know, the electrical utility. And during discussions with the commission, as well as some of the public, they, a town is meant to be developed, you know, and so that's kind of what we are trying to do with some of these regulations, is to allow some more flexibility for property owners to be able to have the ability to do what they want to do on their property in regard to housing. That's what the majority of these initiatives are coming from. There are some commercial uses that we talked about, specifically cannabis, and neighborhood stores, and childcare facilities. But in regard to the amount of housing being able to be put within the Town of Silver City, it seemed like the lot size, the amount of dwelling units on a piece of property were some of the things that were really stifling local developers from being able to actually bring their projects to fruition. So we're just trying to see, you know, if this would be beneficial for them on a smaller scale, to be able to, you know, put those accessory dwelling units on properties, or have three houses on an acre lot, or however many that they are able to financially make. But that's basically the premise that we were trying to get, is that we highlighted that during the Housing and Strategic Plan, that we have a real issue with people developing houses within the town. So some of the barriers that were identified were those specific regulations, and so we're just, you know, kind of testing the waters ultimately, to see if adjusting those regulations would be beneficial to the community, and also, you know, local developers that want to, that want to install housing within Silver City, but some of the regulations are stopping them from being able to do so.
And I might add something else. But during this whole process, a year and a half, or whatever, we've had a lot of public input, we had two-day meetings and things like that. We know that there's probably still going to be some bugs in the code. And we've also got a whole list of other ideas that we would like to look at, we've already looked at them, but we haven't put them in this revision. Therefore, Planning and Zoning Commission amended its bylaws in the previous meeting such, that in the January organizational meeting of the commission, as well as doing the Open Meetings Act and the election of officers, we added a requirement that every January, the commission will find out what issues have happened in the last year as a result of the Land Use Code. Select those that clearly need to be worked, and work them that year for another text amendment at the end of the year, every year. Thus, we will then have consistent, continuous improvement of the code every year, instead of, it's been fifteen years. I know the ordinance says every five, but we've blown that one a couple of times, haven't we? So we know we're going to have future amendments, and the fact that it is possible to have a commissioner on a vacancy be from the county, I think is also beneficial to increase the feedback that we would need as a commission, and we would need as the town.
I think that covers my questions, and I really appreciate your service, all of your service to our community, and appreciate you answering my questions. This will help me a lot, so thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. If the next legislature would come forward and state your name, and go for it.
Good evening Commissioners. Thank you Chairman for suggesting that I go ahead and get sworn in, it was a very good suggestion. Also, thank you Assistant Town Manager for returning my call today, I appreciate that very much as well. I'm behind the program, I am definitely coming in late, so please forgive me if some of my questions seem rudimentary. But going back to Commissioner Shelley's questions, in particular with the subdivisions of the lots, is that going to be effective all through the town, or is it only in the ETJ, as we were discussing?
Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you Ms. Ashburn. So it would be within all of Town of Silver City limits, and as well as the ETJ, because the ETJ is a joint powers between the county and the city. So within that jurisdiction, which is about a three-mile radius of our town limits, and then within all of the Town of Silver City.
Okay. And can you explain a little bit, I know we're having this public meeting this evening, from here, what is the process, how does it look going forward? I heard the date, the twenty-eighth, put forward, is this isn't going to be approved at the meeting next week, the council meeting, or how, what's the next step?
The next step is that the commission will vote on what to do with the results of this hearing, which would be a motion and/or a resolution, simply recommending this to the town council. Then it goes through the town councils and the county commission's notification process. And during that time, there's ample opportunity for anyone to make comments and suggestions. And the focus, of course, would be to community development. And I can say from personal experience and feedback, our community development has been top of the line on taking input and handling it.
Okay, and the date of the twenty-eighth, what was that?
So the, Chairman.
Yes, please.
Mr. Ashburn, the date of the twenty-eighth will be whenever the public hearing is conducted at the town council meeting, and then based on that ruling, then it would either be implemented within five days, or it would be either reverted back to PMZ or denied. And if it's denied, then we cannot look at this article for another year.
Okay. Finally, is it possible to get a red-line copy of these new documents, please?
Chairman, Mr. Ashburn, yes. I can email them to you, and they're also available for the public at the Community Development Department.
Okay, would you please email them to me?
I sure can.
I appreciate what you do, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there any member of the public who has not been sworn in, who wishes to speak, and therefore shall have to be sworn in? Hearing none? I would suggest that we need a motion. After the motion, would then proceed to debate.
I move, I move to approve a request for the recommendation of various amendments to certain provisions of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, and updating the title to the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2025 to the town council, the applicant, I didn't mean to do that part, it's TA 25 dash zero one.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, to approve a resolution recommending various, let me use the correct language, TA 25 dash zero one, a request for recommendation of various amendments to certain provisions of the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, and updating the title to the Land Use and Zoning Code of 2025. That is the question now stated, we're therefore open for debate. Commissioners, do you wish to suspend the rules to allow free-flow debate?
Yes, please.
Do I add a motion to suspend the rules?
I, let's see, I move, I move to suspend the rules.
For this item?
For this agenda item.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I second the rule.
In favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The rules are hereby suspended, a unanimous voice, vote. It's free-flow discussion, please go for it.
Can I, can I, this agenda item right below, how does that town attorney amendment influence our discussion of this?
I will answer that side with one. There, I had drafted a legal request to the town attorney, and I took the opportunity the other day, when I was passing him in the car, to say, "Hey, what do you think about this idea?" And he says, "Well, that sounds pretty good, impressible." And because of that, I sort of thought it might be a good idea to strike while the answer, and submitting to the proposed amendments, which I'm rather glad to see happen. Therefore, unless there's objection from any commissioner, I would suggest that the amendment allowing one member of the commission to be from outside of the town should stand.
Oh, that's specifically regards to this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Personally, I'm very much in favor of that particular improvement to the code, or change to the code where we will allow somebody from outside the town limits to participate. As you know, it's very hard to find people to participate on planning and zoning, it would be nice to access some of those very capable people that have expressed interest.
And I would also add as a backup plan, we have not used Section Nine of the Land Use Code, Section 6.1.1, which allows an outside person to provide advice to the commission, and there has never been a restriction there. They would be non-voting, of course, it would be an external act.
Personally, I've been involved in this process for the last year and a half, and have reviewed the red-line strikeout this week, and I feel like my comments have been addressed. I feel comfortable moving forward with approving this without a lot of discussion, so I'm curious what other people want to feel the need to discuss, maybe there are some things, I feel like I've been swimming in this for so long.
I see that consultant wishes to converse.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner, so before getting too far into discussion and debates before voting, if you want to bring up that there are potential amendments, and so as you're familiar with, the item at hand, the item that is being reviewed, the item that you would be recommending to council is the subdivide of the sub-act. Since that's happened, there has been some comments from commissioners and staff about different kinds of changes that you might want to have to those amendments, and recommend that the council adopts the changes, the TA 15.1 as amended. I have a list, I believe it's amendments, that I would allow for discussion. And so do you want to get some discussion on that? The first amendment on there is changing it so that a PMZ commissioner would be allowed outside of the covenants. This would be changing a typo with a newer store, and changing bracton and relocating in description, adding a little bit of description in Section 2.1.2. The third part is adding the cannabis buffer distance of three hundred feet. We did not change the cannabis regulations, but after starting to review those and look at those, it was Section 15.16, the recommended 15.16 preference campus establishments. They actually laid out a duplicative section on the cannabis establishments, our lab and sub-act. That has changed based on the use table, and so removing that would actually make this a lot easier. And so there's a lot of proposed strikeout text on there, just removing that instead directing anybody reading the code just to look at the use table, so the use table is just kind of like a little bit different color. The fifth amendment that's been discussed is allowing carport encroachments in the setbacks, and so this provides some language that would allow some of that. The sixth one is just a reference that I just catch earlier on in the process. It was supposed to be updated to 6.3.18, and it's still like 6.3.17, and so it was recommended to change that in a section, an existing section. And then the seventh item is removing references to the PUD processes. I originally thought that we might want to just leave that in there to figure out whether PUDs would actually be removed or not, but I believe, I believe a couple commissioners were just removing those entirely, which makes it a bit cleaner in silver bars. But the potential amendment is removing all of the PUD references. So I think that those are things that are looking for respect by commissioners, it could obviously be more, it could be less, but I think that if the commissioners do want to approve TA 25 dash 01 with amendments, then you can reference what those amendments.
Thank you Carlos. Is there a simple way to reference this list of amendments, so that we are legally very precise in that? Because these, several of these are comments that I made that you're addressing, so I had seen, I reviewed this before the meeting, and I'm very happy to see these changes. Is there, that was one of my concerns, when I was reading into the record, what we were discussing, was it, does it include these, or do we need to revise our motion so that it includes these amendments?
We should do an amendment to include the document as submitted by the consultant that we received for the sake of argument today. How does that sound?
Chairman, if I may.
Yeah.
One of the sections where carport encroachment into the setback, one of the details that I think is missing from that, is that they would still be required to be five feet off of the right-of-way. So in different zones within the Town of Silver City, each zone and different areas have a setback requirement off of the roadway. And so what this was to address is some of the areas, especially in some of the older subdivisions up in Silver Heights, Plaza Vista, they have a very large front yard, and most of the time, the front yard encapsulates the entirety of their twenty-foot setback. And so individuals have reached out to the Community Development Department to be able to construct carports over their already concreted driveways. And I did speak with the fire department, and they were for the idea as long as it is open on all sides, well, open on three sides. So no garages encroaching into the front setback, but allowing carports to be able to, due to the amount of weather events that we have, specifically snow and ice, there has been a lot of elderly individuals in our community that have come to try and get carports, and unfortunately, since they are in a location of twenty-foot setback, and their house is in a, with, you know, twenty-one feet back, they're unable to build carports. So allowing that flexibility to at least let them construct a structure that could cover their vehicle with the five-foot setback off of the roadway, to ensure that any potential fire risk is mitigated.
If I could ask the Commissioners, does that make sense to you, and is that acceptable?
Yes.
I would move then, so I will I would move then, so I will make the motion to amend TA 25-01 as previously stated, the main motion, to include an amendment to add. This addition has presented to the commission today, along with the corrections made firmly by community development. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or debate? Hearing none. The commission appear to continue on the debate. In which case, I would like to add a couple of things. We also received a document, which is a review from the New Mexico Municipal League. And looking at it, there's a bunch of stuff that's probably out of touch with the culture of our town, but also some very good thoughts. And I would recommend, by the way, that these become an issue for January when the commission meets to look at issues to address.
Do we have that?
Yes, you should have. It's a, yes, correct. Yep, that's the one.
Okay.
And I mean to say that there's a couple of items that I very much like. One of them, I very much doubt that we can get into the code this year, but I would personally like to change our zoning codes from RA, RB, RC, RD, and R anything else to what everyone else uses, which is R1, R2, R3. So I'd like the commission to think of that in January. And it will be in book of proposed changes that is now up to date. But there is an amendment in there I very strongly feel we need put into this edition, and it's a very simple one. Since day one on the council, and day one on planning and zoning, I've not been happy at all with the definition of a majority. In the main code of ordinances that we have, there isn't a single definition on a majority. It's scattered throughout the entire code and basically says the same thing. In the case of the appendixy, which is the land use and zoning code, the definition of a majority is rather interesting. And I believe it's self-inconsistent. The New Mexico Municipal League recommends that we change the definition of a majority in the land use and zoning code from what it was to, and I have highlighted it in my notes here so that I can find it, to comply with what Roberts Rules of Order specifically states. Now, I will read the proposal. For the definition of a majority in the New Mexico Municipal League, I would recommend using the definition contained in Roberts Rules of Order, which is more than half of the members present and voting. So on our Section 1.6, it's also covered in two other sections in Roberts Rules. The reason that is important, because the way the majority has been defined in the past, it's possible for different chairs or different commissioners to think of things constitute a majority. And Roberts Rules is extremely clear. Secondly, Roberts Rules is very clear about abstentions. The planning and zoning bibles do not allow abstentions except in the case of a conflict of interest. But even if there had been an abstention, an abstention under Roberts Rules is not a vote. That's very important. For example, if you have two in favor, one against, and one abstaining, the motion passes. It's been said, and I've heard it by various people, that an abstention is a negative vote. That is incorrect. Roberts Rule states an abstention has the effect, effect of a no vote, because it's not a yes vote. Notice the words, "to approve a motion" is "a majority." So two in favor, one against, and one abstention, that motion passes. So I would strongly recommend that our consultant takes the language of that one recommendation from the Municipal League that we received today and put that in the book. I would be appreciative of any comments from commissioners.
We've talked about this and I'm in favor of it as well, to simplify it.
I too agree with that. I like that thinking.
In which case, I'm going to make a motion, which is the second amendment, that the proposed land use in code changes the definition of majority to match Roberts Rules of Order and specifically state the words, "a majority of those present and voting." Have we a second?
I accepted it.
A motion and a second. Any further debate? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. I pause.
Is it time for discussion?
You go ahead, Mr. Consultant, yes.
I am curious. In the code, there's a definition of majority and supermajority. And I'm just wondering if you want to similarly try to update the definition of supermajority?
I. Thank you, Carlos. I want to do, that question might be raised, and I have a couple of thoughts on that. The definition of a supermajority in the land use and zoning code is one of the strangest definitions I've ever seen, because it's a majority of people authorized being heard in. Hello? How can you vote if you're an older host? So I would suggest that if we use Roberts Rules, within Roberts Rules, there are existing requirements for a supermajority. There are very few that require a supermajority, and where that is, that can be stated. And as far as anything with statute or the state statutes have their own definitions also of a majority, and they go into more detail. They not only include two-thirds, which is what a normal majority, supermajority is under Roberts Rules, but they also include a three-fourths, a three-fifths, they refer to a majority of a quarter, and so on and so forth. So my suggestion is just to use the standard definition unless there's any objection by a commissioner or staff or our consultant. Back to you, Carlos.
I think that's very clear. I think that in a supermajority, we could just define that as, you know, maybe we could say two-thirds or as otherwise defined, and then try to make sure that those are actually defined in the code.
Great. Okay, everyone with that one? And if I could ask the assistant town manager, any comments on that?
Thank you, Chairman. Not for the majority or the supermajority discussion, but I do think it would be important to talk about the density and within the zones, and also clarification regarding if we are going to update from RA, RB1, RB2, and C, how those would be enumerated, if it would be RA turning into R1, RB1 turning into number two, RB2 turning into R3, and RC turning into R4.
I think it's a relatively simple conversion, and it's up to the commissioners to sign what they're thinking. My suggestion, although I think it's a very important thing to do, my inclination might be to recommend it's delayed until January next year.
Sorry, that was my misunderstanding.
Yeah. Any interactions, consultant? Commissioner, okay.
And then I did just want to touch on, so in the rural zone where it is currently placed, the maximum density would be one dwelling unit per acre. In the RA district, the maximum density would be eight dwelling units per acre, based on a maximum lot coverage of 75%. So they couldn't just cover the entire lot with structures. It would be based on setbacks as well as maximum lot coverage. So within the RB1 and RB2 zone, the maximum would be 12 dwelling units per acre with a 75-foot maximum lot coverage. And the RC zone would not have a maximum density, but it would have a 75-foot, 75% maximum lot coverage. So that's increasing from what we have seen, the density increases as they are defined in the land use code, from rural being the least dense to RC being the most dense.
Thank you. And I would also like to ask a clarification, which I'm reminded of after Commissioner Shelley's comments. When you read the code, you will see that it says a maximum of one accessory dwelling unit or ADU on the parcel. And that might sound rather restrictive, but there's a reason. You can have additional dwelling units, they just won't be accessory dwelling units. Why is that significant? Because one of the privileges of ADU is we have loosened the requirements for parking. And so that's why it says one. It's not really a restriction, it's just saying we're only going to give that break to one of those dwelling units. And of course, there is a definition, less than 750 square feet for an ADU. And I was wondering if our assistant town manager would have any additional comments on that, potential confusion.
Yes. So again, like the chairman stated, ADUs would be calculated outside of the maximum dwelling unit number. So it would be basically allowed if it is 750 square feet or less on any residential parcel within the Town of Silver City. Previously, it was calculated within all accessory structures. So quite often, we would have individuals coming in and they would say, I would like to put in an ADU. Then we would have to calculate the gross floor area of all accessory structures, including garages, sheds, shops. And it was based on either a percentage or a given maximum. So everybody was entitled to 600 square feet on their lot. If that 600 square feet was encapsulated by shops, sheds, then unfortunately, people were not able to get an ADU based on that regulation. If it was a percentage of the gross floor area based on the size of the principal structure, which was more than, or based on the size of the lot, more than half an acre, then you would have 1,000 square feet or 50% of the gross floor area, whichever is less. It became very confusing on the implementation side, and as well, it didn't seem beneficial for constructing residential units. So we removed the ADU from that requirement.
And I believe that's a dramatic improvement also. At some point, I need to ask if the commissioners agree with the staff report on the required findings, which are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, Section 7. The opinion, with 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7, are the requirements necessary met? Because we do need to. So I would amend our motion with TU 25-01 to include finding this numbers 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. Is there any second to that motion?
I believe it's 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7.
Correction, thank you. You're right. 1, 2, 4, 5, and 7. Any second?
A second.
We have motion and a second, any debate? Hearing none, then the motion is amended, which takes us to a vote. Before going into the vote, is there any further input from the members of the public who have been sworn in or the community development department? Any commissions?
Chairman, I would like to also just touch on the cannabis uses. So we are proposing the removal of cannabis businesses within the mixed-use district as well as increasing a buffer between cannabis establishments of 300 feet. Let's see. Then we also had an update to the definition of childcare and group home facilities. So there has been several inquiries to the community development department regarding the difference between a family childcare home and a group childcare home. So a family childcare home is regulated by a definition at the state level, which is basically one provider being able to babysit up to, I believe it was, six children. And then a group home is having multiple providers in one home, like if there's two people that want to babysit, so they could have a little bit more kids in a daycare facility at their home. So we didn't have a definition for a group childcare home. We are adding that now to help with those businesses that want to operate within the town, and also putting a requirement for square footage. So anything less than 2,500 square feet is allowed in residential zones. Anything larger than 2,500 square feet would be conditional in residential zones, except for the residential C district, to help facilitate the need for childcare in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just have one question for community development. The mechanism by which we should inform the town council of the results of this? Do you wish a written resolution? In which case, it needs to be drafted? And, or would it be satisfactory to transmit the minutes of this meeting to the town council? What would be your reference?
I would leave it up to the discretion of the commission, whichever you all prefer.
Might I suggest that community development therefore develop a simple resolution with the recitals being whereas we held this meeting, whereas there has been open discussion between the commission, the public, community development, and our consultant? And whereas everyone thinks it's a great idea, therefore, we are recommending to the town council the attached document, which shall be as stated in our motion as amended, TA 25-01.
Certainly. We will add the resolution to the packet for the council for the public hearing on October 28th.
And then, since it's a resolution and it has to be signed, does the commission authorize me to sign it so we don't have to have an additional meeting?
Yes, does that require a motion?
Yep. No, no, you can do it with the United. Everyone thinks it's a great idea.
Yes.
So it's a great idea, so you can do that. In which case, I will now put a roll of the paper, TA 25-01, and request recommendations of various amendments, some provisions of the land use and zoning code in 2010, and updating the town title to the land use and zoning code 2025 to the town council with amendments as previously documented by our prime.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Aye.
Chairman Weeden Smith?
Aye.
The ayes have it. There will be a resolution, and the commissioners authorize me to sign it. It's customary this time to say that there could be an appeal. However, this is not a hearing. The appeal process in essence is, anyone can comment on this up to and including up to the later on in March when the council meets and then adds it to other people. With that, unless there's any other comments, this hearing is now closed. We're almost at the end of the agenda. The next item is continued business, of which there is none. Oh, okay. Next item is new business, and I suggest that the new business item, which was an amendment to 6.1.1 of land use and zoning code, allowing one member of the commission to be from outside the town limits, has been taken care of in the previous debate. Unless there's any objection, I suggest we cancel that new business amendment. Unless there's any objection, I suggest we cancel that new business amendment. Hearing none, it's gone. Any reports from staff? A little difficult to hear, yeah.
I have to go. I just received a family emergency call. I'll have to.
Please go, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bill, and also Carlos.
I hope it works out, Jackie.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Good wishes go with you. Next item on the agenda is reports from the commission. Commissioner Stone?
Wait, before me, Rob. Emily, do you know if we have a hearing next month?
We don't have anybody actually trying to reply.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have discussions next month over how all this went with the council.
Yeah, sure.
Great, okay. Commissioner Stone, any reports?
No reports.
Commissioner Moody, any reports?
No reports.
Commissioner Middlestadt, any reports?
No reports.
In which case, I've only got a couple. One of which is, I did have the honor of doing an appearance on a radio show discussing something close and dear to my heart, Roberts Rules of Order, newly revised, 12th edition, in which I included the history of how the whole thing came into being. The only other one I've got is a comment that the commission has a handbook, this is it, and I'm going to be spending probably quite a bit of November updating it with the changes that we've discussed today and the amendments to the bylaw. And I will also be adding the protocol for text amendment hearings, since that is currently not in the handbook, as we haven't done one for 1,000 years. Otherwise, that's it. If any final comments before we close the meeting?
No.
I wonder if we could have a motion to adjourn?
Well, yeah, I want to make a comment.
Yes.
This is a big day.
Oh, yes. And do you know something else? We normally celebrate with food, but John Bayless, our commissioner who likes food, isn't here, so we don't have anything.
It's true, but I left him a mint that we found up here.
Okay, honor is satisfied.
But this is a lot of work, and you've brought us along very ably with a lot of perseverance, and I appreciate it. And of course, Jackie and Carlos, who are now billowed with, worked very hard.
It's very hard.
So I just wanted to publicly say how grateful I am that we got through this together. And hopefully, it will succeed. I hope the town council, if they don't agree with us, at least help us substantively understand, you know, what they want.
And it will continue next year, and the year after.
Right.
This is a whole new concept in the town of continuous improvement. And I give a lot of credit to Jackie Alair, the community development director, assistant town manager, for asking two years ago almost, can we have bi-weekly meetings with the commission? Specifically, the commission chair. But we have arranged it so that nearly always, another commissioner will attend. It's frequently been the vice chair because of the detailed involvement. The only restriction I have on that is making sure we never get into a situation of a rolling quorum. And one other comment I would make, if you notice, we're a little bit less formal than the town council. We still abide by Roberts Rules, but the municipal league rules of procedure specifically state that planning and zoning commissions are more informal than a town council. And we do our best to have a heck of a lot of fun.
And we did suspend them today.
And we did, yeah, we did, we did. Any other comments, David?
I might add that I'm especially happy that this is now coming to an end, because as a new commissioner, I found it maybe doubly, triply more complicated to jump in midstream in this development of the new planning and housing codes. So thank you for your patience in my extra confusion over and above just joining the planning and zoning commission.
Well, I'm very glad that we have the commissioners we have, because it's a very good mix. And every single commissioner has had input on everything we've been doing, not only on this, but also on the variances, conditional uses, zone changes, and other things like that. I'm very proud of this commission, and how well you work as a team. Thank you very much. And how will we work with community development? In which case, we'll try to have a, go ahead.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Any seconds?
I second.
We have motion and second, those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. We are adjourned on a voice unanimous thingy. Thank you.